I call this meeting to order. Last school board meeting for Williston, here. Do we have any adjustments to the agenda? I can think of two, Bob.
Okay.
Okay, I have two action items that I wanted to pull in. One was to add, hello, my phone is being interesting. I wanted to move eight-three into seven dot one to award the contract to Morway Moving and Storage. If that's okay, because that should be an action item, right? That's not just in the consent agenda?
It's entirely up to you, you can go in either place.
There might be some discussion about it, so we'll just move it from eight-three to seven point one. And then add seven dot two, which is award the contract to DecTAM for asbestos abatement. Remediation, asbestos mediation. Are there any other adjustments to the agenda? Hearing none, okay, audience and communication, there's no audience here. So we will move on to presentations, which we have none of. And reports to the board. Principals report, Jackie.
Yeah, I'm happy to answer any questions about the principal report. It's busy time of year, you'll see there's a lot of interviews and different pieces that are part of it. But I'm happy to answer anything specific if there are any questions.
Just on the renovation roadshow that I know Greg and I don't know if others are doing as well. Is it schoolwide or is it? Or, because I know there are groups of eighth graders being excluded, is that across the board?
So the way they're doing it by team intentionally, so it can really be tailored to the impact on that team. Which is really what, one big piece for the kids that they really want to know. So I am not sure, I'm thinking they, I, I'm not sure if they, they probably are taking their eighth graders out of the mix and just continuing with their instruction and presenting to five through seven is my guess. I haven't been at any of those, Greg's been facilitating them. But I know there was, teachers were appreciating that it was tailored to specific age groups. And so that the kids really got a good feel for what, what's it going to be like for me.
Yeah, that's good.
Helps decrease their anxiety a bit.
Okay, nothing else on the principals report, we'll move to the CVSD debrief. So there was some discussion of some policies. We're still going through all of them, it's mostly just name changes. This one had to do with differences between some of the merging districts. And then we also did some retreat planning, our retreat, which we would normally go to. The CVSD board is having next Wednesday, it's an all-day retreat. And then the CVSD board was made aware of facilities meetings that Williston has scheduled for July. Maybe some in August, whatever comes up, so they kind of have a heads-up that there will be likely some meetings heading their way over the summer for the renovation.
And it was, they mentioned it was extremely important that we can get together quickly.
Yeah.
I know we're all very busy over the summer to keep those construction projects moving.
Yeah, and one, one thing that is nice, they are going to kind of piggyback any like Shelburne needs that they have. They're kind of wrapping up at Shelburne so that, they seem to indicate that Shelburne would just join Williston and it would kind of be Williston schedule dependent, but we'll see if that actually plays out that way. But they do know it's coming, so those are kind of the big CVSD takeaways from two weeks ago. Did I miss anything? Okay. CSSU debrief, that's going to be really short because it was a 10-minute meeting. We just kind of wrapped things up, minimal discussion about things in general, we approved the consent agenda and that was pretty much it.
Just a couple of things that I wrote down to note. Jeff Evans mentioned there's four professional service days this year, two will be district days. For I think K three eight. And then there is what he called, for the middle schoolers, they've been working together across the district as a think tank and getting together periodically throughout the year. And they're doing their end-of-year roll-up and, and you know, readout of their work at Shelburne Museum on Thursday between eight-thirty and two-thirty. And if you're interested in attending, the best time to attend would be around one-thirty. It was just an FYI, not an expectation.
On Thursday of this week?
Thursday of this week.
It's a student think tank, so students were brought together from each school initially. And now all the schools rep, student reps are coming together as a whole group with the SBL coaches, Stan and Emily. So, and it's focused on, you know, what, what is, what is it like to be a learner? And in your school, what is, what engages you, what would you like more of? So it's really about student engagement and getting kids' voice in, in there. So they did this with, with middle school kids from each of the schools across the SU and now bringing them together.
What's the, what's the, sort of the, I don't know, deliverable? Or what are, what are they trying to net out of the students? And is it going to go into one of the policy discussions or is it?
No, it really was information that they had brought back to the teachers in each school. In terms of, here were, here were the, the general, generalizable pieces of what came out in terms of what kids are really enjoying about the program, the middle-level program in particular. What they'd like to see more of, what they don't like so much. And dreaming about kind of what education could look like. Sort of taking that idea of personalization and having them explore that a little bit. And then they're bringing that back to teachers in faculty meeting time to really hear and think about, so what, what ways might we use this information to make change in the school?
Excellent.
Thank you. The kids have loved it, that have been involved.
It sounded really cool.
It did sound, yeah. Pretty sure I'm working at one-thirty. It sounds like something I'd really love to go see is.
They'll probably, I'm guessing they might video part of it or something.
Yeah, I guess they would, yeah. Good.
Anything else on the CSSU debrief? Did I miss anything? Okay, the third quarter FMR?
The third quarter FMR is in your package. There's good news and then news that takes away the good news. The good news is Greg and team are, are doing measurably better now that we get through the third quarter than we were estimating your forecasting as we pulled together the second quarter or first quarter FMRs to the tune of that being the end of the news. We're likely, forecasting likely that we'll end the year thirty-seven thousand. Should put my glasses on, shouldn't I? Yeah, thirty-seven thousand favorable to budget. But before I finish the document, I added another paragraph that says, at the end of the year, two things have to occur. One is, and we knew this one along, food service operation, any deficit needs to be written off to the, the general fund. In particular, this is the final year of your existence, it would be right to, write it off to that fund because that's in essence what you're doing with checks, you're covering the deficit with funds out of the general fund. More importantly, I comment that the, the board decided to move financing of the construction project into March of this year, in essence to avoid problems associated with the transition to a new district. Because you can't, you can't vote as a district to incur debt only, and then dissolve and then have someone picks up the debt. You have to have had a, have it as a debt instrument before July one. And then secondly, the interest rates were such that you were going to do better if you secured it in March than if you waited to July. So we did all that, for all those good reasons. The thing that we didn't realize until here a month ago was that we now have to book the interest on twenty million dollars from March to.
I knew it was too good.
Yeah, from March to July.
What is that quarter?
Before you close the books. That is two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. So we're working with both your auditors, well, we're working with your auditors to determine exactly how they want us to sequence that. And if they say we want it written into the books of Williston before you close the end of the year, then you'll see thirty-seven thousand minus two-hundred-and-fifty as the final ending point for Williston. Entirely covered by fund balance you have on hand, so it's not, other than change the record for the end of the year. And change the amount that's handed over to CVSD. You can, we'll figure that all out. I did not include that adjustment in the forecast for this, for this year, but wanted you to know about it.
And when will you probably hear back from the auditor? Just curious.
Probably sometime before we close the books.
Okay, that'll be good.
If I can, I can probably move it up to sometime in June that we're clearly in agreement on what we're going to do and how we're going to do it. Okay, and I'll send you an email, Amanda, when that's done.
Okay, and do we, is there any action that we need to take or anything on that? Or it'll disappear on the audit report in December?
That's a good question, actually.
Be a final sign-off on that?
Yeah, not to, not to diminish the celebration you're going to have tonight for being done. I won't, I would never think of calling you back into session after you're done. But Jean, your new COO, will have to bring you into session in September to in essence authorize the transactions that your district made from this meeting till the end of the year. So that's the point in time where you'll do director's orders and say, yep, we approve everything that was transacted just before you finished. You do that meeting, that's probably a fifteen-minute or a ten-minute meeting. And then you have to meet one more time after that in November to approve the audit. And approve the minutes of all of your meetings, including that last meeting you have. So that's the work ahead of you, but that's, you're almost really done tonight.
Bob, is there any update on the stormwater compliance issue?
No, I, I don't think Amanda and I have heard anything from the town other than Rick is working to get on the schedule. Some sort of a meeting between the select board and the school board to discuss circumstances and options.
Which school board will that?
Yeah, I was like, I'm hoping it'll be.
Well, clearly up until July first, it will be you as a school board. After July first, the other board will be at the table with the same.
Same issue.
Same portfolio of evidence and. Other questions on the FMR? Thank you all very much.
Okay, that segues nicely into a facilities update, since stormwater is kind of in the facilities, least package for the payment part. Do we have a facilities update other than, I mean, we've mostly, all of it, or not all of it, some of us in part have been coming to the bid openings and the bid awards. Anything else we want to update on? Bob, Kevin?
The only thing I can think of is just set the stage for what you're doing this week and next, which is to take the largest portion of the work and in essence, put it on contract with subcontractors under Rearch's watchful eye. So that's why the bid opening this week, the, the bid opening will be relatively straightforward, but five times longer than any bid opening you've had before because the list is quite long.
Have we nailed down if that's one or four on Friday? I know Greg can't do one.
We have nailed down that it's one o'clock on Friday.
Okay.
You didn't have a location yet, you were, you asked somebody to?
Yes, and I secured, I cashed in some chits and I secured the dining room at one o'clock.
One o'clock dining room.
At Williston Central. So I'm guessing it'll be about an hour from start to finish. Again, all you're doing is watching Mike open the envelopes, telling you what was in the envelopes and passing them around and building a spreadsheet. The work is all his from, from the moment you finish until the following Thursday when he and your facilities committee will recommend awards to be made underneath that bid opening. The, the, most of the facilities committee is meeting the entire afternoon of that Thursday, the twenty?
The fifth.
Thank you. In preparation for that meeting, so it'll be relatively straightforward. When you get there, there'll be a discussion, a recommendation and a little bit of recap on what Mike has done from when you open the bids to making a recommendation. And there may be other people in attendance at, I don't think at the bid opening, but at the bid award, there might be some of the larger subcontractors who are there to see what, what decision you made.
Interesting, okay.
Okay?
Good.
Okay, anything else for facilities?
Okay, FAPAC, Karen. There has not been a meeting since the last meeting of this board, so there's nothing to report. Our final FAPAC meeting of the year is next Thursday.
Well, there was a fantastic staff appreciation meeting.
Oh, true.
Everyone appreciated greatly and it was really fantastic across the board.
Got that one off though.
Yeah, we had in the school board sponsored.
Snacks.
Snacks in the afternoon on Tuesday.
On Tuesday. It was, there was a lot going on last night for that. I know everyone appreciated it because it's such a busy time of year.
Excellent.
Okay, so then discussion matters, we have the, oh, so the six dot one. This is, so as we move to the consolidated board, we want to make sure that we don't miss any little nuances that each board does. So for instance, a great example, we have a rep on the FAPAC. That's something that Williston School Board does, and so we're going to let the CVSD board know about that and then they'll move forward with that information however they see fit. So we just kind of wanted to put a list together of any other things like that that might be specific to the Williston School Board, so that as we do this handoff, we don't partially drop the baton or drop it or anything like that, so.
I wouldn't, so I have a few things that aren't specific to the Williston School Board, but there are things that are specific to the Williston School District. So in particular, our PTO and how it funds things is I think unique across the district with having an annual fund that people are, you know, they don't, aren't required, but.
Right, ask to participate.
Ask to participate in, and that's how we fund all our regular class field trips. So how field trips get funded under the new district, I think is, is sort of that umbrella. You know, will every school district be allowed to do, or every school town be allowed to do their own thing in PTO? Or is there going to be some umbrella policy about how those things are handled? And then the handling of overnight field trips, I think is something that really needs to get tackled. And, because it's not even, it's not even uniform in Williston School District. And so just having it sort of, just coming, you know, in this day and age, what, what should we be doing as, you know, for our children? And what, you know, what's, what, what do we, what do we want them to get out of this experience? And why are we doing this and making sure that that mission is there and so. And then the world language offerings, Williston I think offers world languages in more grades than maybe some of our other school districts, and so just.
More and less.
More and less.
More in the middle, actually.
We're in the middle, okay. So just, you know, figuring out are there going to be changes, you know, or is it going, is every town going to be allowed to do their own thing with that?
Can I respond to that one? Because we've been working on that with this year when we were developing the budget, looking at differences. And you'll remember that on the study committee, equity and autonomy.
Right.
And so the equity part is like same resources behind every kid when you pull out food services, transportation, facilities. So just the instructional support that's behind every kid, that needs to be fairly equal across all of our schools. The autonomy piece is that you might choose to have world language starting at grade one in one school. And you might choose to have family and consumer sciences or tech ed at another school. And as long as it comes out the same in the bottom, that's really, you know, where we are, within certain minimums. So we know their education quality standards, we know their best practices. So we're kind of calling those things projects that we're going to work on and tackle the most important ones first. But say this is the minimum, but after that, in each of the individual schools, you can do what you want.
Well, and this is one of the things we definitely talked about in the study committee as, as being opportunities where students may be able to go to another school to, you know, or we, yeah, just different school choice or different opportunities that are learning opportunities at other schools. Those are some of the things we definitely talked about in the study committee. And language was one of those, one of those things.
We're moving forward with that, understanding it and making sure that.
Well, and band and chorus I think was another one of those where we were recognizing that there may be opportunities across a school, a bigger district to do some of that.
Two other items come to mind that I think Williston has chosen to approach and even fund differently than any other schools. One is see why I'm entering. And I think that really needs to be thought about and addressed. And we've already mentioned food services, but you know, we know that as a board, we've been a bit generous keeping that, keeping that program the way this board has wanted to see it. So I think we need to address that going forward too.
The other thing I had was four wins. I know that not every town in our school district, our new consolidated school district offers four wins or offers it for the number of years, so is there, you know, and it's a rich program in Williston. What are, you know, what are, what, going forward, you know?
Someone enrich, enrichment, yeah.
Yeah.
Good.
Keep them coming, keep them coming, I got my list. I also have one other thing, so going back to the PTO funding for our annual fund, we get seven K from St. George right now, I don't know how that works. Once you consolidate, how does that work at all?
You're not going to see that.
So, but that's a significant portion of our annual fund, so we're going to have to figure something out.
But I think if you look, if the, if the district is looking at the larger, you know, policy surrounding field trips and things like that, then there may not be as much of a financial need. You know, it's like what, what, you know, what, what do we want every student to have as way, in the way of a field trip? And maybe some of these field trips that have been permitted are, are just not, don't fall under that policy anymore or whatever, you know, I'm just, I have no idea. So we don't need as much money for them.
I swear there was one other thing that I sent, because I sent an email already, so I have it documented someplace, but I can't remember it now. It was the FAPAC rep. Anything else?
I think it's sort of how much, how much fundraising is permitted under a new district. I mean, our, our school board, I mean, our PTO raises over fifty thousand dollars a year.
Yes.
It's a larger fundraising policy that we have to decide at that larger board and.
But thirty thousand of that pays for field trips that other school districts have a policy where, or other current school districts in our, in CSSU have a pay-as-you-go, which is what Williston moved away from when we established the annual fund. So if you parse that out, are we on a par with Heinsburg and Shelburne with what our PTO fundraises for? If you take out the field trips, you know, that are currently, you know, like in Heinsburg, I think, I forget when we were having the, our study committee. I know that a lot of them just do like what we do at Williston, which is every permission slip has to come in with ten, fifteen, twenty dollars, whatever the cost of that field trip is.
And there could be, aside from the question of field trips, there could be a larger question of is, is, is there an upper limit on how much a, a given town is allowed to fundraise and what they're allowed to use those monies for? Could that become a, you know, I'm thinking, not now, but in, you know, do you mean to lay the groundwork for in the future? Is that a bone of contention where a, you know, a town with lots of resources suddenly is able to do things asymmetric way?
Yeah, raises equity.
Absolutely. Good.
We can think of lots of problems, Bob.
It's not his concern.
It's not his concern, I know.
He's just writing them down.
Somebody will have to sink their teeth right into that.
Okay, so I think unless there's anything else, I got a list, Bob probably has a list.
Yep.
Okay, anything?
Thank you.
Great. Okay, so communications, the board corner topic for the Williston Observer. I was thinking it might be really nice to do kind of like a farewell thank you and just list, kind of like what we did at town meeting, Kevin, where we had the list of everybody who served and just say, thank you very much, we really appreciate blah blah blah.
Having that list in the Observer might be a really nice.
Yeah, okay. Unless somebody's dying to, I'll put the draft of the article together. Anybody want to do it or I'll do it?
I'll help.
Okay, I'll pull the slide from you then, okay? And then we can put it together. So I will draft, thank you for the Observer. Unless there's something else that people will think might be more appropriate.
No, I thought the coverage of the, of the bond was a nice, you know, that was a nice story that was.
Oh, yeah.
Last week, I think.
Yeah, Greg, yeah, Greg met with Jason.
Yeah, yeah.
When are we going to start seeing trailers and different things like that on the Williston School property?
About two hours after school ends.
Yeah, like I was going to say, June twentieth or something?
Wednesday of in-service week is my understanding.
Okay, we have two hours after school ends?
It's the twentieth, yeah, that's what I had, June twentieth.
Yeah, so I, I think the twenty-first.
Twenty-first.
Do we want to put something in the Observer that says this is kind of like your wayfinding, this is what's going to change, this is how you're going to get around? You know, because there's going to put a pretty big fence up from what I understand, so.
And is a good idea.
Aren't they rebooting some?
Yeah, so there's going to be parking, yeah, there's going to be different.
Yeah, rebooting, traffic law will be a little different.
Yeah, and pedestrian pathways too.
Yeah, that bike path, pedestrian path.
Yeah, that way, people that, who use it for community commuting or anything like that will know what's going on.
I'm trying to figure out if that's something the facilities committee should do though.
Yeah, they should.
I don't think that's necessarily us, because Greg, they have, they have their own facilities communication plan, like they're setting a blog and a website and other things, like they have communications going out to parents, they have Connect Five things lined up, so I would just want to make sure that we coordinate with them on this.
So, but I believe that this board called the facilities committee to order. So, you know, I don't know that it's inappropriate for us to lay that out as part of our communication plan before the end of June. I think it's totally.
Oh, yeah, I just want to make sure we coordinate with whatever the facilities.
Well, maybe, maybe what we, maybe what we could do, especially if we called them to order, is maybe we could formally kind of pass the baton to them and, you know, say, here, you know, here are the resources that this committee is, is going to be bringing forward. And that way, people who are maybe looking to the school board for guidance would know where to go. I don't know.
The board is willing, the facility committee meets this Friday and either has one or two board members in attendance typically. And we can, you can take up the conversation there and make sure you're doing things in concert with the, the rest of the team.
We'll make sure we do.
We are, we need to participate in that also, just because they're the ones who know.
Yep, absolutely. Yep. Good stuff, okay.
All right, I'm taking notes. Okay, and if we have two articles in the Observer, that's great, I'm sure he won't mind. Jason's looking for stuff usually. One might be an editorial, but that's okay.
Would it even be appropriate if there was a high-level, you know, kind of abstracted version of one of those, you know, like site plans?
Diagrams, yeah.
Would that be, would that be something that was appropriate to? And I'm, I'm really thinking high level so that Rearch or the facilities committee didn't have to field a thousand questions about, well, why are you putting this here?
So in response to that, we've got a website that's almost ready to go. And on it, it's got all the phasing diagrams and all this stuff, so I, I think.
That's much more in-depth than I was even imagining, it's awesome.
I think we've got it and what we need to do is start directing people there. We'll start advertising it.
Wow.
But I think as we get to where, you know, especially as, as we approach, I mean, the Fourth of July is right after the Williston Board kind of, you know, walks away from this. I think giving people advanced notice and, and maybe rec, the parks and rec are going to do that, but I think we should be making sure it's done because it's part of, you know, our responsibility. Because it's going to, that, our school's going to look very different for, for the Fourth of July and the location of, of things that are going on during the Fourth of July is going to be in different places, so.
Okay, well, we'll talk about that on Friday then.
Yeah.
Okay, so is there any more discussion around articles for the Observer or?
I think we've got it.
Okay, hearing none, we'll go to action items. I have two based on our adjustments to the agenda. Can I get a motion to award the contract to Morway Moving and Storage in the amount of sixty-eight thousand, four hundred and ninety-one dollars and twenty cents for packing and moving services at Williston Central School? It's a different amount than what I.
Fifty-nine-five on the agenda.
I thought that was the amount, no, the, no, because, yeah, Tom sent out an update.
I sent you an updated one.
Tom sent out an updated one.
Amanda has, there was two elements to the bid.
Yeah, Tom sent out, Tom Bargn's sent out an updated one, I think.
Yeah, and I didn't add them together. We want them to both move material and provide storage for material on-site for some portion of the duration of the project.
So did you get the motion with, with Amanda's number?
Sixty-eight, four, ninety-one, twenty. What's, yeah, what are your two numbers, Bob?
The two numbers are fifty-nine-five plus seven thousand, one hundred and forty dollars in, in storage costs.
Where did twenty cents come from?
Hey, money's money.
Well, that doesn't add up either. Do you have, you have fifty-nine thousand, five hundred and one and then seven thousand, one hundred and forty and twenty dollars is the other?
Twenty cents.
That gets sixty-six, six forty.
Sixty-six, six forty. I don't know where the number Tom sent out, because did you see Tom's email?
I probably did, but Amanda, I can't remember them all, so.
Let me bring up Tom's email because he, he. Tom had said that he had a different number and then he attached some.
The two, the two amounts on the bid from Morway are fifty-nine thousand, five hundred dollars, no cents, and seven thousand, one hundred and forty dollars, no cents.
I will, I'll just go with this and we'll.
I believe we've got an errant keystroke on the part of Tom Bargn.
Okay.
So sixty-six, six forty?
Okay, I will.
So essentially fifty-nine thousand, five hundred is for the actual physical moving and then the seven thousand dollars and whatever is for the. So essentially fifty-nine thousand, five hundred is for the actual physical moving, and then the seven thousand dollars and whatever is for the storage of items.
Correct.
Okay, so I will try that again. So can I get a motion to award the contract to Moray Moving and Storage in the amount of sixty-six thousand, six hundred and forty dollars for packing and moving services at Williston Central School?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Great, okay, now let's discuss.
So I emailed Bob and you this afternoon, not about this one, but about this whole process.
Yeah.
Cause I'm sort of confused, I've sat through bid openings for all these other things related to construction, but we're not having a bid opening related to this or the other item that, for this discussion, so I just wasn't sure if there's a chain, if it, if it's a different process for whatever that reason is, I just, I was confused. You know, we have these spreadsheets where we look at all the bids and we make sure they're all, you know, apples to apples and everything for all the other bids that we've been looking at at the bid openings and, and the awards, but not for these two. So I just wanted to raise that as something of why.
Was my answer satisfactory?
Yeah, yeah, that, that the next C, COO would have to.
Well, there was, there was three or four sentences before that, but current practice for boards is to, um, uh, under the contractual agreement with a general contractor to have bids opened in front of the board.
Mm-hmm.
Current practice for bid openings in general is to have those opened in a compliant bid opening process by your administrative team and then presented to the board for award.
Okay.
So hence the difference. This contract is not Rearch's contract, it is your contract with Morway to provide. And the asbestos contract is your remediation contract with.
Okay, that makes sense, okay.
So that's the difference. I did say in my email to you though, that, that, um, it brings up an opportunity for, um, the, the board and the administration going forward to revisit the whole process of bids and consistency and practice, so that, um, because there are also differences amongst schools on how they, how they each do it.
Okay.
Some more, uh, uh, best in class than others.
Okay.
Um, so it's a good topic to kinda kick the tires on.
Yeah, no, that's fine, I, I, and I didn't, I didn't get the distinction from the email, I, I didn't, I read your email quickly, so.
Good question.
Okay. Um, any further discussion on this action item?
My only other question about the moving one was, does this include moving in and moving out?
Yes.
Okay.
It includes, it includes everyone, everything that someone at the facility committee believes is part of the process of moving in and moving out.
Okay.
Uh, as of today.
Right.
So there's, there's the possibility that some may change as we get halfway through.
Right, absolutely.
Moving, moving is one of those things where there's always surprises. Does this mean that we would just be revisiting a future award for dealing with surprises?
Yes.
We would, sorry, good point.
Again, the tradition, subject to discussion if you wanna have it, is that change orders don't come to the board for review and approval.
Yeah.
Your, your board members at the facilities committee can affect.
Are empowered to do that, that makes sense, no, they, they.
Up to a certain dollar value, I would imagine.
So that we're not paralyzed in the trailer trying to deal with a problem that's out there this afternoon, wondering how to get you all together.
What is in that contract? Is it packing up the rooms, or is it just moving boxes out of the building to, um, a different location?
It's a mix, it's primarily, um, moving, except in those interest, in situations where uh, the administrators isn't as comfortable, somebody else could pack it up. Very often with a teacher's classroom, it seems to work best if the teacher provides the packing, and then he or she doesn't physically have to move it, store it, and put it back in the classroom at the other end. So that's generally how it works, but sometimes, um, like with a library, uh, not that that's in this mix, well, it is a little later, but, um, it, it's okay for someone else to pack up a library. You don't necessarily need librarians doing that, but, so it's a mix.
Yeah, we've talked to teachers about it, it'll depend, um, so like packing up at the end of the year, there's some, there is a time we're giving teachers, so they will engage in that work. Bigger spaces, there might need to be some additional people packing, um, but it's, it's when we're doing the phasing plan and it's a really quick turnaround, there are opportunities, um, for professional packers to come in if we need that support and we can't kinda pull it off. Um, you know, in that space or areas of spaces.
And that's included in that contract?
Yeah, there's a mix of it, so.
So this goes the length of the construction, or is this for just a phase?
It goes the length of the construction.
Construction, okay.
Does it include, um, or what level of, I'm sure it includes some, what level of insurance does it include for loss, damage, hazard?
Uh, you have an extensive insurance policy that covers stuff inside the school right now.
But does it, does it cover it when it's in?
You have a builder's risk policy overlaying this for the duration of your project that covers unforeseen circumstances associated with the fact that you're under construction. So you're.
So things in a pod would get covered by something?
So if the pod with the library books gets flooded?
We're covered.
Okay.
You're generally covered for all situations except those where someone on the inside, that would be Jackie and I, um,
exhibits a lack of judgment and care.
For a teacher. They, they don't cover all of that, so.
Okay, fair enough, so.
Gotta have common sense, no.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So we're in pretty good shape with the two policies.
Okay, great.
Any other discussion on this action item? Okay, hearing none, um, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, the ayes have it. Um, on to action item number seven dot two. Can I get a motion to award the contract to Dec-Tam Corporation in the amount of three hundred ninety-six thousand, eight hundred and five dollars for asbestos remediation at Williston Central School?
So moved.
Seconded.
Fantastic, any discussion? Oh, dude, I had a question. Why was somebody twice as much? They were like almost eight hundred thousand dollars.
Typically, uh, they vary, uh, sometimes over the desire for somebody to land the work.
Okay, so they didn't want to do it.
And their schedule, uh, the, the more, the more busy they are, the more likely they'll float a number that, uh, would be very lucrative if a board had to.
Okay.
Had to take advantage of it.
So they were busy and they don't want the work.
I'm gonna guess that's more what you're seeing than the actual work.
Okay, it was just a little concerning.
This is a large project, so, um, it requires somebody who's got the resources to do it, or is being paid very, very well to consider it.
I see. Any other discussion?
I have one question, um, and it just occurred to me, because this is our contract, not Rearch's contract.
Mm-hmm.
Um, does Rearch have, are, are, is there any precaution that we need to take, or does Rearch already have adequate authority to, um, dovetail with the asbestos remediation? Cause Rearch is gonna be overseeing, I would assume, some of the other subcontractors that may impact or be impacted by the asbestos remediation work.
I think that's where Tom comes in, isn't it?
Um, well, it's, it's more, uh, just by practice. The asbestos remediation work cannot legally be undertaken by the general contractor.
Right.
You need someone licensed and certified to provide this work, so whenever it occurs on any project in any school, it's always by a separate subcontractor.
Okay.
And then the contractor, the subcontractor, and Tom need to make sure that it's somewhat seamless, because, uh, it is quite complex. The remediation has to be done before Rearch can go into an area, has to be all done, has to be tested and cleared, uh, and has to be done quick enough that.
That's exa- that's exactly what I was asking about.
They're, they're working extensively to make sure that all occurs, um, and, uh, occurs to the school satisfaction. The plus with Dec-Tam is they're a large organization, they've got a lot of resource, so sometimes the, these things, they offer a lot more flexibility. If we need fifteen bodies in a room for the next two days.
They can do it.
They, they have the resources to kinda do it, and if we need to not have them here, they have other places they can deploy them, so. So, anyway.
Okay, any other discussion on this action item? Okay, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the ayes have it. Um, moving on to the consent agenda, can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended with the removal of eight dot three?
So moved.
Seconded. Okay, great, thank you. Uh, confirming our next meeting date, or do I have to actually do the I part? I think I do.
Yeah, you do, it's no discussion.
No discussion, but we do the I part. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the ayes have it. Um, confirming the next meeting dates, which aren't ours, well, there might be some, but, um, we do have a meeting, uh, for those who can make it, Friday at one o'clock, we were just talking about that, to do bid openings, and then next Thursday at five o'clock to award the bid opening.
Following Thursday.
Following Thursday, yes, following Thursday, the twenty-fifth, um, to award the bids that we open on Friday. And then, um, that's kinda all we have for now. You can see the other meetings for the CBSD board, and we've covered most of them. Um, so, if there aren't any other questions about dates, we don't have an executive session. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
We're out. Yes, I got it.